Good morning. Glad to welcome all of you to the County Commissional Meeting, those of you in the audience and those of you by way of television or other social media. Now I'd like to call the meeting to order. All those present, please let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. It seems like all of us here. I have the invocation now by Commissioner Webb, and we're going to have the pledge by Commissioner Farley.
Please join me in the invocation. Heavenly Father, we stand before you today as your servants. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we proceed through this meeting doing the business of your people. We ask for your continued blessings upon this county, this state, and this nation. Father, I ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Please face our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we shall have the issue of oath of office for our newly-elected Commissioner. And Huggins, at this time, we will have that procedure done. Madam Attorney, anything?
Yes. We'll call forward Sarah Beth Rhodes and Ms. Huggins and anyone she wishes to stand with her. Yes. All right. Ms. Huggins, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I, State Your Name, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Pitt County Commissioner, so help me God. Let me be the first to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Yep. And she may come and take her seat if necessary. Yes.
She could be to me for a minute. Yes.
Oh, boy.
Did Mary mean?
She's going to give news thing to the left wing.
You know he didn't think the same thing.
I had to have it this evening. I thought you were going to say that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let it to you, my brother. Let me welcome you in to our Board of Commissioners, and we look forward to your service. Thank you for joining us. At this time, we should have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved to second, that we approve the agenda. All in favor, but let it be known by raising the right hand. Thank you. Those who oppose? Thank you. Presentation at this time, National Substance Abuse Prevention Week. Scott.
Yes, sir. On the agenda, you have a proclamation for National Substance Abuse Prevention Week. If the Board would adopt that first, then we'll go down front and have a formal presentation.
So moved for adoption.
Second. Second. All in favor, say it motion, let it be known by raising the right hand. Those who oppose? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, if you and I can go down there, and if we can have Debbie Sudicum with Sudicum, Port Health Services. Well, great. Well, this morning, we've got prepared a proclamation, and show it to the audience, the viewing audience as well. Mr. Chairman, so if you'd like to go and read this. It's entitled, "Pitt County Board of Commissioners, Greenville, North Carolina, Pitt County National Substance Abuse Prevention Week, May 14th through 20th, 2017. Whereas prevention and early intervention strategies can reduce the impact of mental and substance abuse disorders in Pitt County, North Carolina. Whereas the need for individuals, families, businesses, educators, public safety officials, and community leaders to play a role in community prevention efforts every day to improve the health and wellness of Pitt County. And whereas it is appropriate that a week should be set apart each year for increasing public awareness of and around the prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders. And whereas Pitt County Commissioners, Port Health Services, Torium Health Resources, Pitt County Schools, Safe Communities Coalition of Pitt County, Pitt County Coalition of Substance Abuse have commitment to improving health of the community through substance misuse prevention and the promotion of mental health and wellness in North Carolina, will raise awareness regarding the importance of preventing mental and substance use disorders." Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 14th through 20th, 2017, to be Pitt County National Substance Abuse Prevention Week, and urge our citizens in all agencies and organizations interested in substance abuse, misuse prevention, and the promotion of positive mental health to unite during that week in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of Pitt County with the important role that individuals and communities alike have in helping people lead healthy, productive lives through prevention. This is adopted this 8th day of May, 2017, signed by our Chairman, Melvin McLaughlin, and attested by our Clerk, Kimberly W. Hines. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have now Ms. Joyce Jones from the Life of North Carolina. Is she here?
Yes.
Formerly Strive, right, Joyce?
Good morning. Mr. Chairman and other members of the Commission, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to share with you this morning. About 17 years ago, this Commission, and particularly this Board of Commission, maybe not all of you because it has changed over the years, gave your support in bringing to North Carolina one of the nationally-known organizations called Strive. And that's what we've been operating under for the last 16 years. And last year, we started the rebranding process to now officially operate under the Life Empowerment Center. Our corporate name is Life of NC, but we're all about empowering people. So our Board of Directors took the opportunity to rename and rebrand and start operating under Life Empowerment Center. But it's kind of hard to get away from Strive. We still do the Strive program and have been doing it for 17 years. And actually, this coming Friday, we'll be celebrating our 200th graduating class from the Strive program, and we're really excited about that. So why I'm here today is to really kind of give you an update on where we are with the Life Empowerment Center. As I stated, we started out, and I'm going to use this PowerPoint that you have in front of you. We started out with our Strive program, and I want to let you know that we didn't start this program by ourselves. We started it with a commitment from individuals in our community. Our community has embraced this program. And particularly, I want to thank the Department of Social Services because they were one of the first departments that partnered with us since May of 2000 and has continued to be a strong partner with us in this program. We started that when the Welfare Reform Act hit in trying to reduce the welfare rolls, and we feel like we've been a strong partner in making that happen. So we also operate our Pitt County Fatherhood Program. I think that went too far. I don't know why it's going. She has a nonprofit. We don't have all these fancy things to work with all the time. We operate our Pitt County Fatherhood Program also as a partnership with the Pitt County Child Welfare Department, and we're thankful for that, to be able to help dads to become better dads and to be engaged with their children in their homes, whether they're in their homes or whether they're not. Because research has shown when dads are involved with children, that children's lives are much better. We also have our Family Life Engagement with Purpose, our FLIP program. It's a life skills class, teaching individuals how to live life and how to be able to strengthen the family. But today, I want to bring emphasis on our Pitt County Reentry Program. Back in 2011, the North Carolina Department of Public Safety engaged in the Justice Reinvestment Act in trying to reduce the number of individuals that we have incarcerated. And the purpose of this is to be able to bring individuals, it's flying by itself. I think someone jinxed it for me, but it's okay. No, it's not. The purpose of it is to actually bring individuals back to our communities. They're going to be, they're being released on the supervised probation to reduce the prison incarceration. As you know, that is one of our most expensive operations that we have in the nation, not to mention in the state and county. So what we're doing is trying to provide transitional services for individuals that are coming back to our communities. So many of the individuals, when they come out of incarceration, if they don't have a place to stay, that actually, before we started this program back in 2010, individuals were dropped off on the doorsteps of the courthouse to kind of fend for where they wanted to be. And most of them did not have a place to go. With our reentry program, we're now able to provide transitional housing, as well as employment and other opportunities for them. Temporary housing, transportation, clothing, and food assistance. Some of them only have the clothes that they have when they are released from prison. So we're able to assist those individuals in partnership with the Community Corrections Department in providing some much-needed services. Substance abuse and mental health is another big component of individuals that are coming back. They are not rehabilitated while they're incarcerated. So those individuals that went in with those problems, they come out with those same problems. So we're here to help with that. So with Pitt County Government, we have been partnering with you guys in various departments. And I just want to mention, I don't think I had enough space to put all of them on there, but I wanted to share with you, well, it's going again. As I mentioned, with the Pitt County Department of Social Services, we've had a strong partnership there. Three years ago, we started partnering with the Pitt County Fatherhood Initiative, and several years ago with the Pitt County Child Support. In the Pitt County Child Support, we're there to try to provide alternative to dads being incarcerated who do not have a job. So we partnered with the Child Support Division to look at referring individuals to our program so that we can help them to find a job. Because if they're sitting in jail, they cannot find a job if they're sitting in jail and don't have a job. So we've been able to use an alternative to that by having them to come to our program. And I will say that we are making a difference with that. Through the Pitt County District Courts and Superior Court Judges, we've also partnered with them to say, as an alternative to citizens, whenever it is necessary, whenever you can, to please refer those individuals to our program so that we can assist them with the Fatherhood Program, with job training. And they've been doing that. They actually have flyers on their desk to make sure that individuals don't have a job, that they can come. The Pitt County Health Department. Health education is so important. They come to our office each cycle that we have and do health education to make sure that individuals are healthy and they understand the importance of health as it relates to going to work. Our Pitt County Planning Department, I can say to you, the Housing Division has assisted individuals that are coming out of incarceration to be able to identify some housing needs, as well as some employment needs with contractors that they're working with, and also special contracts that we work with as well. The Pitt County Building and Grounds Department, we've been able to place individuals there under paid work experience that is not costing you, the county, any funds. We've gotten a grant through the North Carolina Department of Commerce where we've actually partnered with employers throughout to be able to provide work experience and educational attainment to those individuals that are coming out and need a bridge to be able to get some additional training in order to go to work. Those individuals, sometimes, when they're coming out of incarceration, they have so many barriers that it takes much longer for them to be able to get a job. So this way, we're able to give them some work experience, as well as providing a resume opportunity for other employers to see that they are worth hiring. So we're thankful to the Pitt County Buildings and Grounds, as well as Pitt County Solid Waste. They've been a strong supporter of helping us with individuals that are returning back to our community. We also operate this year the Pitt County Disaster Relief Employment Program in partnership with the Mideast Commission in providing individuals to be employed at different sites, such as Solid Waste, with helping with hurricane relief. Project Connect is one of those projects that we've connected individuals from the North Carolina Department of Commerce to partnership with other departments in the county, such as the Planning Department. And I'm happy to say that in the Planning Department, we have one of our graduates, Sylvester, that's here. Where's Sylvester? Stand up, Sylvester, so they can see you. He's in the Science Division, and he worked on the Project Connect on a 10-week training program, and now is working part-time in the Planning Department. And we are really thankful for his work and thankful for the Planning Department in allowing Sylvester to do that. Thank you, Sylvester. Also, you've partnered with us in allowing us to be able to have some of your personnel that have come and they have served currently on our Life Board and on our Reentry Council and Executive Committee. And I want to say this morning, I do have some of those individuals here with us today. Our Board Chairman, Mr. Dan Mayo, is here with us, and we have other Board members, if you'll stand, and Reentry Council members that are part of here. And we want to thank them for our support, for being here. Thank you so much. Let's see. Support services, as I mentioned to you, we have quite a few support services that individuals need when they come back to our community. And these reentry services are not done without a collaborative partnership with individuals in our community. In our Reentry Council, we have over 30 partners that are here with us. Some are here with us today, some of our reentry partners. Where are you? Will you stand?
Reentry.
Partners, there we go. Okay. Some of our partners are here with us today. They help us with some of these more supportive services, such as mentoring, employment, housing assistance, food assistance, educational support, and transportation assistance, and even with mental health. I say to you that all of these are very vital services in making sure that these individuals have a smooth transition back to our community. Want to give you a few stats here. Since we began in Operation October 2013 to current, these are our stats I want you to pay a close attention to. We've served over 448 individuals that are coming back to our community. We've placed over, well, 235 of these individuals in employment. And the wages on a yearly wage, this is just at $8 an hour. A whole lot of other individuals make more than $8, but we thought we'd be on the safe side and give you the stats. So you see the amount of money that we're trying to save and help and bring back to Pitt County versus some other statistics of why this is important. The cost of prison incarceration for medium custody and the cost of jail detention in the center. You see, one person under medium custody cost us, as taxpayers, $32,770 for medium prison incarceration. And with jail detention, we have $35,496 that is costing us. This is important because we have individuals that are coming back to our community that still need our services. These individuals are our citizens, and without these valuable services, they will not be successful. Since we've been operating this program, our recidivism rate has been hovering around 12.9% for the last three years. Our cost for actually operating this program through the Life Program is a budget of $225,000. This year, we are expecting a shortfall of $75,000 in this program to be able to operate it. I know you, as Commissioners, have quite a few different budget items that you have to tackle every year, and I appreciate your hard work. And I want you, as you're going through your budget, if you would consider any possibilities or any ways that via grants, via grant match, via in-kind, or whatever services that we can get to be able to help us with that shortfall this year, or provide some much-needed services. This, we feel, or know, we believe and know, that this program has been valuable in placing people there, and we know that our community is safer. We do realize that individuals there are what we call, I call them, career criminals, and there is a place for them. But I do also know, and we advocate, that individuals that need a chance, need an opportunity to be able to have a place to live, to have food and shelter, and to be able to have the respect and dignity of any other individual. We've all made mistakes. I know I have. And I'm thankful to God that he is a forgiving God and that we are able to move on and be able to be successful. I'm thankful that I have the means to be able to take care of myself, but I also recognize that there are other individuals that come to us and come back to our community that they can't access housing because now they have a mark against them. They cannot access medical needs, so they end up in the emergency room. So if we can provide opportunities for individuals to go to work and to be able to provide for themselves and for their families, that our community will be better and that we will be better by having them here. I will stop because I could go on and on and entertain any questions that you may have, but I thank you for allowing me to be able to come and be a part of your discussion as you go through your budget process.
Joyce, I want to thank you for your leadership and your vision. I know for saying that this program has been very beneficial to the citizens of Pitt County, especially those that's been incarcerated, and certainly, I feel part of it as we were one of the ones that helped initiate this program in Pitt County. So thank you again for your leadership, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public address to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, we have nobody signed up unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward to make a public address.
Here are nine items for the report. We have Teresa Campbell with ABC Board.
It's good to be here and see you all again. Today, I'm going to give you a short overview of fiscal year 2016, some financial highlights from 2016, and this year so far for our fiscal year '17, and some of the alcohol education funds that we've put to work this year. Okay, the retail sales for fiscal year 2016 were $14,934,533. All right, let's start again here. The retail sales for fiscal year 2016 were $14.9 million, a $650,000 increase over fiscal year 2015. Mixed beverage sales, the total mixed beverage sales for fiscal year 2016 were $3.1 million, a $133,000 increase over fiscal year 2015. So on this screen here, you can see, compared from 2015 to 2016, we had a $784,000 increase in revenue, which is 4.5% increase over the previous year. Our profit distribution comparison shows 2015 versus 2016 for the statutory 3.5% profit distribution, which is what we're required to give the county every year. For 2016, it was $451,000. The additional working capital that we took out of our pocket and gave to the county was $848,974, for a total of $1.3 million. Financial highlights, the revenues increased by $784,229 over the prior year. Over 21% of our profits were expended for law enforcement and alcohol education. We finished our construction of our new office and warehouse complex. We sold our downtown Cotant Street location to East Carolina University for $550,000, and we took the proceeds from that sale and applied to our loan for the new warehouse and office. We converted the Memorial Drive location, the old office, to a mixed beverage location. Now for this year, our retail sales through the end of March were $11.9 million, and so far this year, we're increased sales by $549,000. Mixed beverage sales through the end of March were $2.4 million, and so far this year, that's a $34,000 increase. Our distributions to the county this year so far, for beverage price support, which is paid on a monthly amount, total for this year so far is $45,691.57. Distribution to the county profit-wise was $975,000. Financial highlights, the revenues increased by $784,229 over the prior year. Over 21% of our profits were expended for law enforcement and alcohol education. We finished our construction of our new office and warehouse complex. We sold our downtown Cotant Street location to East Carolina University for $550,000 and we took the proceeds from that sale and applied to our loan for the new warehouse and office. We converted the Memorial Drive location, the old office, to a mixed beverage location. Now for this year, our retail sales through the end of March were $11.9 million and so far this year, we're increased sales by $549,000. Mixed beverage sales through the end of March were $2.4 million and so far this year, that's a $34,000 increase. Our distributions to the county this year so far for beverage price support, which is paid on a monthly amount, total for this year so far is $45,691.57. Distribution to the county profit-wise was $975,000 so far this year for a total of $1,020,691.51, or 57 cents. Now, for our alcohol education dollars, we have funded ECU's alcohol prevention programming $100,000 plus over the past four years. We've provided funding for a teen safe driving program here in Pitt County as well as funded an alcohol abstinence program for Pitt County Middle and High Schools. And we've provided funding to Pitt County Criminal Justice Association to raise awareness, awareness for underage drinking and driving. And that's my short presentation for today. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just make a comment that myself and Dwayne Holder met with Teresa and her assistant last week to go over the financials and things are looking good for the ABC Commission and have looked, have talked about in terms of the upcoming budget for fiscal year 17, 17, 18, increasing the 1.3, but we'll hold off in terms of what recommendations being made until we present next week on that. But they're, they're looking good. I think their, their working capital, the statute says you can have up to 12 weeks. You've got 8.9 right now.
That's correct.
So, you're 75% of the max, so you're, you're looking good with your working capital. So, things are looking good with ABC. Obviously, it's an indication of the economy and that the economy is fairly strong.
That's for sure. That's for sure. And we're looking, you know, hopefully, sales will continue to increase and we'll be able to give more the next year. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
One good note, just as she's walking away, the warehouse office space she was sharing with us is paid off. The Arlington store, which is the only other big note they have, will be paid off in about a year and a quarter, a year and a half. So, I mean, those debts will be gone. So, I mean, I think they have plans for other capital items, but at least those items are being paid off quickly in the very short run.
Okay, Scott, Manager's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, of the Manager's Report, your next meeting dates, we have, as I just mentioned, the Budget Workshops next week, starting Tuesday, May the 16th, running through Friday. And those start at 8:30, run until approximately noon time or whenever the Board finishes up. We do have the following week, May 22nd through the 26th, as optional Budget Workshops. It's been very far and few in between that we've had to go into a second week, but if things get complicated and there's additional information you request of us as staff, we always set that aside just in case. Then for May 22nd is your regular meeting at 6:00 PM and then June the 5th would be your first meeting in the month of June at 9:00 AM. County Assembly Day will be this week, be Wednesday, May the 10th, and that will obviously be in Raleigh at the General Assembly. And I believe we've already talked to folks who would like to go to that. And Commissioner Huggins, I'm, I'm not sure if staff has reached out to you, but you're obviously welcome to attend that as well. On Item C, got a good news item that our Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams has now been named or elected the Chairman of the Mideast Commission and would like to congratulate her on that leadership position with, within our region and congrats on that. Also, congrats on Item D, the, our Clerk to the Board, Kimberly Hines, was elected President of the North Carolina Association of County Clerks over the, all 100 county clerks in the state. And that's a prestigious role for her too and congratulations to her. On the next item, the North Carolina Department of Labor had their Certificates of Safety Achievements recognition here in Pitt County. And this was at a banquet on April 20th. We actually had the, had Sherry Berry, who's the Commissioner of the North Carolina Department of Labor, was in attendance as, as the Speaker. We had several departments within county government which are listed on your agenda on Page Two that were recognized for safety achievements. Pitt County Government in general received the 11th consecutive award. Pitt County Animal Control, the second consecutive Silver Award. Pitt County Buildings and Grounds, the second consecutive Silver Award. Pitt County Detention Center, the second consecutive Silver Award. Pitt County Solid Waste, the second consecutive Silver, Silver, Silver Award. Pitt County Social Services, first year Silver, and then Pitt County Sheriff's Office, first year Silver. So, just would like to recognize their efforts in keeping our safety efforts going strong. In terms of the last item on the agenda, the Farmers Market Update, just wanted to update the Board some different things going on with the Farmers Market. Obviously, the market is open and active. We, as you are aware, the county applied for a grant to expand the market through the Perkins Wells West, and that was a $100,000 grant matched by $100,000 in county money that will add about 5,000 square feet of space to the market. That is actively going on right now as we speak. The pad has been poured. It still will be going up next, probably beginning this week, and I believe we're expecting the completion by the end of the month. It'll be a very quick, quick project once it's up and, and operational. The last thing at the Farmers Market, the, the vendors have had several meetings regarding their constitution and bylaws and just wanted the Board to be aware, there was, there's many things that they had changed on them. The more substantive items were obviously changing the name of the Farmers Market from the Pitt County Farmers Market to the Leroy James, Pitt County Leroy James Farmers Market. Also, they've broadened the purpose of the market to include items other than your traditional fruits and vegetables, to include meats, bakery items, plant, seafood and local crafts. And the third item of, of major item to report to you is that their policy committee has been increased to a size from three to five. This policy committee is appointed by you as the Board of County Commissioners. You currently have appointed the three members who are on there and they'll be coming back to you to expand that for the additional two names. Currently, you have James Futrell, Mike Skinner and Bobby Yates serving on the policy committee. And again, that would be expanded for that purpose. The, the County Attorney, myself, the County Engineer did go out and meet with all of the, the vendors and then there were a couple subsequent meetings with, which Janice met with them to further work on their constitutional bylaws, but this work has been active in March, April and May. So, it's all come to a head and complete and hopefully with the completion of the construction, the Farmers Market will be almost doubled in size and even better operation than it's been in the past. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Before we proceed, I want to recognize Mayor Gloria Sean Brown. She's out in the audience and I think we have the Coalition, Healthy Evening Coalition, Maxine White, I thought I saw her out here. And we did have former Mayor Pat Dunn in the audience and I didn't know whether to have any other elected officials. Sarah Beth Rhodes, she was here earlier, so we want certain to recognize her. It's time, we should move now to the Item Four Consent.
I move for acceptance.
I second.
Motion to accept the Item's consent and it's been seconded. Those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Eyes carry.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would behoove us to mention the, maybe the purchase of the new election equipment. Just to mention it at least, if the manager wants to.
Yes, if we could also have Dave Davis come forward and maybe describe what we have done here. We've actually have a cost savings on this. The equipment is, is costing us less than what we anticipated when we originally began this project, but maybe Dave, you can explain what we're buying and just kind of the Ps and Qs about it.
What we're looking at doing is replacing the 52 M100 tabulators, the voting machines. It's still going to be a paper-based system, paper ballot. And what the voter will do is mark their oval and feed it into the machine and it'll tabulate the results. We tested the DS200, the new machine, in the general 2014 election at our County Office One Stop site. I would periodically ask the voters as they leave, what'd you think of the new machine? What new machine? The voter, voters didn't even notice. So, that showed how seamless it was. Even my wife, I asked her after she voted, what'd you think of the new machine? She didn't even notice it. It is more up-to-date technology. The machines that we have now, the M100, we've had for a little, 11 years now. And they started, they have begun to show the wear and tear. We sailed through this past election seamlessly on Election Day, didn't have to worry with any issues on Election Day with the machines. But when we did the recount at our warehouse, we ran into a lot of clock chip errors, which is basically the internal battery. If it dies, that machine, you can't do anything with it till you replace it and certified technicians have to do that. So, that shows that age that's coming in. So, that's what we're looking at doing is replacing the M100s with the DS200s. The savings is thanks to Janice. She noticed that the original quote was from a couple of years ago. She pointed out, well, let's see what we can, yeah, if we can get a lower quote. And they came back with a lower quote. And actually included in that quote was an increase on the trade-in value of our M100s because we're going to trade those in for the, the newer ones.
I just thought maybe the public might need to hear that it wasn't going to be that big a change but an upgrade, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can't have Russia tapping into our machines, just a joke.
No, the, it's the, going to be the same process. We have a computer that serves as the programming and collection of all the results. It is standalone. It's not tied into the network. Actually, the room that we store that computer in, because it's essentially a little closet, doesn't even have a network drop in there. The only thing we do is plug it into the power, so nobody can hack into it. Only people that have access to that room is me, the Deputy Director and our absentee manager, because that's where we keep our absentee, the voted one-stop and absentee ballots.
Actually, Dave, the, the actual voting polling sites where you vote, those machines are not connected to any type of network. There's a card that's then hand-carried to you to the computer you're talking about to be downloaded into.
That's correct. Yep. It's, those machines themselves are never connected to the network.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item Four, let's see here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item for decision, you have on Page 63, reappointment to the Animal Services Advisory Board. You have the veterinarian who's being asked to be reappointed by our Animal Services Director. This is Dr. Terry Chirami.
I move second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we accept Terry wanting for the Animal Services Advisory Board. Those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Eyes have.
And your last, last appointment is to the Animal Cruelty Investigators. This is an annual process in which the Animal Neglect and Cruelty Ordinance appointments require animal cruelty investigators to be appointed. You have four individuals, William Christopher Arnold, Johnny Barnhill, Michael Sean Evans and Sean Ross, being asked to be appointed.
So move.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded, they appoint these gentlemen to the Animal Cruelty Investigative Committee. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Eyes carry, motion carry. It's time we have the Commissioner's comments and we'll start for Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to welcome our new member to the Board and look forward to serving with you.
Which one?
No, no comment.
No comment.
No comment.
I too would like to welcome you and tell you, we're looking forward to, again, to your service and we know you're going to do well. Commissioner.
Thank you, Ann. We've received in our package documentation, memorandum about the Annual CPA Compliance Audit. On Page 22 of that documentation, there is a sentence that says that the corrective action, that the county will transfer funds in fiscal year 2017 to cover the deficiency fund balance until revenues and other financing services become available. If we do not have that figure at this time or how much it's supposed to be, I'd like at some point in time to be apprised of what we're talking about transferring.
We'll get that to you.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
No comment.
I too would like to welcome Ann to our Board. It's going to be a pleasure working with you. She and I served on the Department of Social Services Board some years ago and we got to know each other and enjoyed working with each other. And I would also like to say that for your first meeting, you have done well because we're getting out early.
Well, to, to the Chairman and other members of the Board, thank you for accepting me and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you very much.
I move for adjournment.
I second.
Moving properly second, that we adjourned all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
You superb, isn't that?
Those, those.